Good evening, everyone. To those of you who are viewing at home and those here in the council chamber, welcome to the St. Charles County Council Meeting of February 26, 2018. This evening for our invocation, we have Jacob LeBlanc from Element Church of Wentzville. Following the invocation, I will leave the pledge. Everybody, please rise and remove your hats.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you that we can be a part of a nation who allows its citizens to have a voice. Father, we lift up every one of our council members right now that you would give them the wisdom to make the best decision based on our community's needs. And Father, we pray for peace over this meeting right now, that every motion that's brought up, Father, that your peace would cover it. And God, we just thank you once again that we have the opportunity to serve our city, God. And we just thank you, we praise you, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Brice.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ehlum. Councilmember John White.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Thank you. This evening, we have a public presentation by the University of Missouri Extension. They're going to give an update on the new statewide staffing plan. And I would like to ask Dana Jurling to please come up and start the presentation.
Thank you.
Right to the podium there. Oh, you can have that.
We've got good stuff here. Thank you.
So, thank you for having us. I'm Dana Jurling. I'm the 4H Specialist for St. Charles County. And we thank you for your continued support of our program. And I'm joined today by two guests from campus. I have Dr. Jody Squire and Steve Devlin. And they're going to tell you more about our staffing plan proposal.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Thanks again for having us here tonight, and thank you for your continued support of the University of Missouri programming that happens in St. Charles County. It has been a pleasure to work. I've been working with Extension for 23 years, and I've got to spend quite a bit of time in working with the 4H program previous to this position and working with the young people in St. Charles County and those who are enrolled in the 4H program. Now, I've moved into another capacity, so I'm working with administration. I'm the urban region, regional director, of which St. Charles County is a part of the urban region. And so, we have been, for the last about two years, working on some pretty significant changes to how we deliver programs across the state of Missouri. And the goal is to better impact communities and to really target university resources to specific needs of the community. So, about a year and a half ago, the folks in St. Charles County had an opportunity to take place in community conversations. And those took place across the state of Missouri and gave residents an opportunity to express what they felt the needs were in their communities. And part of the results of that are what we've used to start this new staffing plan and what we're using to really target specific needs in communities. So, as part of our rollout of this plan, we're going around and we're speaking about our new plan to all of the counties in Missouri. And we're, that's a lot, yes, yes. And so, I, again, thank you for making time for us so that we can get the word out because we're at the phase where we're not, we have not implemented yet, but we'd like to get feedback and we'd like for you all to know what we are doing because we are here to serve the public. So, you've heard enough from me. We have a guest, and I work here in this area of the urban region. Here is St. Charles County, Jefferson County, and then the St. Louis area. So, I'm here a lot, but we have a guest here from campus, Dr. Steve Devlin. And he is going to talk specifically about how this staffing plan will roll out across the state and then what that will mean for you in St. Charles County and what you'll get out of this because we think it's going to be extremely beneficial and it's going to have a great impact. So, Steve Devlin?
Thank you, Jody. Thank you, council members and folks listening as well. I want to thank you for this opportunity. And for over 100 years, Extension has been a strong partner of the University of Missouri as well as the citizens of Missouri, helping to bring education and training programs out that help people live their lives in a better situation. And just like your county government has changed over time, Extension has changed over time. And like your county governments, we're all dealing with different issues when it comes to budgetary situations. And so, part of the conversation when we talk about Extension and how Extension's reorganizing, we have to take into consideration that we're trying to do more with less. It's not like there isn't a need in Missouri or isn't a need in our communities. The need's greater, if anything, than ever, but we need to do things in a slightly different manner, look at different ways of delivering our programming, and engaging with the communities. And so, one of the things that we've talked about in this new model is creating a position that we call the Community Engagement Specialist or the County Engagement Specialist, taking one of our folks, pulling them back from their area of specialty. So, then maybe, you know, our traditional model is we focus on a specialty area. I'm in business, so I focus on business development. Or a 4H specialist focuses on working with youth, or a horticulture specialist might focus on working with the master gardeners. What we're asking this new position to do is we're asking them to step back from their area of specialty and talk to you, the stakeholders in the community, about what your needs are. It's a lot better for us as an institution to have a good understanding of what the needs are at the local level rather than us walking in and saying, hey, I've got a hammer, do you have a nail that I can hit? You know, I'd much rather have an opportunity to interact with you, and when I say "me", I mean the community and Extension in general. We'd much rather be in a position where we're partners with you, looking at the issues that you're facing, the opportunities that you're facing, and then building the right coalitions and bringing the right resources to bear. Traditional Extension has focused primarily on agriculture, 4H, or youth development, what we call HES, which used to be Home Economics, and community development, those four areas. Well, here in Missouri, we have business development, so we're a little odd from that perspective, but we feel like it's a good model. But Extension can be much more than those. You know, we have many other partners across the state, other institutions, as well as the University of Missouri, that bring other areas of expertise that could help you in developing new programs, new educational curriculums, to try to address the issues that you're facing today. Not to say that we're going to walk away from the old models as well. You know, there's still a lot of folks that focus on farming in these communities. Even here in an urban, what we consider an urban county, you still have a lot of agriculture. And there's a lot of business that's related to that agricultural as well. So, there are opportunities for us to partner with you in new ways. And part of this conversation is about us recommitting to that partnership, that connection to you and being the university or being the educational connection that can help Missouri grow. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer any of those questions.
Any questions, gentlemen? No? Well, Steve, I thank you for coming and your delegation for coming. And I've been a liaison to the Board of the University of Missouri Extension here in St. Charles County, and I can vouch that they have served our county residents well. So, thank you.
That's one thing we always hear. The folks that have relationships with our people, they love them.
If you have an interest in gardening, you need to go to Extension and see what they have established out there. It's amazing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And our cards, all of our cards are in the information that you have, so if you have any questions, you can contact us.
Very good. And not to embarrass her, but I would like to ask Ruth to stand up. Ruth Meller? Ruth has been a 4H leader in St. Charles County for many years.
Thirty-one now.
How many?
Starting thirty-one.
Well, that's wonderful. I'm so happy that you do that. It's a real need that we have. And I can attest that because I'm a proud ex-4H'er. I guess you're never an ex-4H'er. I'm always a 4H'er, so I attribute my ability to be before you tonight and speak to you or otherwise I'd be too embarrassed. But 4H helped me tremendously, and I'm very proud of those years, and they were a wonderful part of my life. So, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on, we're moving on to conditional use permit?
Bill number 4570, an ordinance granting conditional use permit, CUP 1714 for one, a winery, and two, buildings, structures, or open spaces for conducting weddings and/or wedding receptions or other private parties to Defiance Ridge Vineyards LLC, property owners, and Charles Gilentine applicant.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this at this time. I think there's some more work that still needs to be done on it.
A second. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion's been tabled. Moving on to bill number 4570.
That we just did.
That's one we just tabled. Okay. Conditional, okay. The conditional use permits been tabled? Is that to come off the table? Anybody wish to bring that off the table?
They can't.
Not at this time. We'll move on to public comments. Public comments is a time when the public can come forward and speak on any topic they wish. They're allowed three minutes per topic. And if there's a pro and con, we allow three speakers pro and three speakers con. Are there any public comments tonight?
I have one speaker, Arnie Deanoff.
Okay. Please come forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Arnie A.C. Deanoff, public advocate and county resident. First thing I'd like to address is Councilman Joe Cronin's rebuttal to my accusation that he spends $25,000 in health insurance on the county taxpayer dime. Well, Mr. Cronin, we do spend a lot of money on health insurance, and it's deemed for full-time employees that work over 25 to 30 hours for the county. You, sir, only work 1.5 hours, two meetings per month, which will be three hours per month, and do not meet the requirements. You have three dependents, yourself, your spouse, and a son, who remains on the county health rolls. That's $1,800 per month for taxpayers to pay for your premiums, which pays for the self-insurance fund, for a total of an annual basis of $21,600, plus doctor visits, tests that are needed, and prescriptions that your family is on. I don't think it's right for you as a part-time community servant to be...
No, it's false.
It's false.
John, are we allowed to have this kind of...
Not, I don't think we really want to attack personally.
I'm not attacking, but it is freedom of speech, Your Honor. And there's lots of court cases going all the way to Supreme Court. I divert the county counselor.
Point of order. Is there, should we allow this to go on to attacking a private person on the council?
You really have very little opportunity to squash these persons.
Okay. Then go ahead, continue.
Mr. Deanoff is a...
No, no, we can't really speak.
Well, he is a political operative. He's told me he's going to be running against me next election. And just for the record, I have no sons that are on the county medical, okay? My sons work for Boeing, okay? I'm sorry.
Okay. I just want to make it crystal clear, Mr. Chairman. The Supreme Court rules and regulations, free speech is very important. What I'm saying is total fact here.
Go ahead, carry on.
Thank you. So, I don't think it's right for Mr. Cronin to be spending $25,000 of taxpayer money and whoever else is on the health rolls of this county. It's for full-time employees. Second item is I'd like to reach out and be proactive. I reached out and made a phone call to the captain of field operations this afternoon in an attempt so we can alleviate any type of illegalities or the county election authority from overreacting and calling 911 and saying erroneously to the police that there's fights, having a code read, and having a police officer become in an accident or be hurt. So, the captain unfortunately was in a meeting and didn't return my phone call, so I'd asked the chief of police to make sure that there's a presence at tomorrow's first day filing for county officials and county council members, judges, and officials of the county. I will be there, and I ask that we uphold trust, honesty, and important election rights at the election authority, which is located on Turner Boulevard in St. Peters. The vehicle purchase, we're spending $304,000 for Dodge Chargers from Lou Fuse in O'Fallon, but then when it comes to three Ford Interceptors, we're buying it from Lou Fuse in St. Louis County. And we're also buying nine Chevrolet Tahos from Don Brown in St. Louis City. I think that's wrong. We need to support our neighbors who employ people of the dealerships of St. Charles County, keep the money right here at home. We bent the rules for $4,000 for the Dodges. We should bend it for the other. And just one other item, and I'll be done. Tomorrow is filing beginning at 8:00 till 5:00. It's the first day of filing, and there's a lottery system for all countywide offices, including four county council members, one, three, five, and seven, along with judges and associate judges. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Are there any other public comments? That's it?
All the cards I have.
Okay. Then we move on to the county executive for oral report. Mr. Elman?
(pause) The computer, if you're loaded here, is here. Try clicking it now.
Here we go. There it is. There we go.
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. As you all know, the charter requires that once a year I make a report on the state of the county, and that's what I'm going to be doing tonight. I'm going to move rather quickly on some of the early stuff because we've got some interesting comparison stuff at the end that I think we might have some more discussion about. Roads and infrastructure, as you know, $48 million from East West Gateway this year thanks to the good work of Councilman White. And Route 61 project, of course, is important. Guttermuth Road on 364, I think is going to really open up Phase 3 a page to a whole additional neighborhood. This year, we contributed $2 million towards the infrastructure on Route A so that the GM plant, or the new logistics operation near the GM plant, could be built. We supported the study by MoDOT to gather info on improving I-70. Originally, we were offering to pay for that. Good news is, they did it, and they're paying for it.
Good.
But that's how important we thought it was that they got started on it. Took them another year, 18 months to get started, but they're on it now. Public safety, as you know, most important thing we do. 948 fugitive arrests. St. Charles County Fugitive Unit, the U.S. Marshals Violent Offender Task Force, made 236 arrests, 76 of which were in St. Charles County cases. And I think all of you know about the case today. Chief, would you like to say anything about that?
The officer's fired. The officer went home this afternoon.
And this is the fugitive unit that we're talking about right here, and they've done a super job of rounding up some people that really don't need to be on our streets. A total of 4,700 criminal cases that were filed, 6,900-plus were resolved in our courthouse because the county's counselor's office has taken over the municipal and state traffic tickets. That's allowed Mr. Lomar to go ahead and take his personnel and really concentrate on the misdemeanors and, more importantly, the felonies. And hopefully, that has made his office a lot more effective and a lot more efficient. We're one of three in the nation to receive a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice for cybercrime investigations. Some of the cybercrime numbers there, you can see, this is an area more and more important. Probably some of the things we're learning about the situation in Florida are things that possibly our cybercrime people, if anybody were to do those things around here, could find out about it, and we could intervene before a tragedy happens. Public safety, again, police training. I'd put our training up against anybody in the region. The racial bias training, the CIT training is very, very important. A lot of training on de-escalation techniques. And of course, you know, we have a very technologically advanced firearm training simulator now, if you haven't seen that out at the new sheriff's department. It's really, really state-of-the-art. And I think any, you know, we need to do everything we can to make sure that if our people ever get in that difficult situation, life and death situation, they've at least had some practice, they've had some training, and all of that, I think, makes it more likely they'll do the right thing. You all know about the Emergency Operations Center set to open this summer. Will allow us to bring together some things that have been at different sites. Will free up some space, much-needed space for some other county activities. We've completed the renovations and expansions at the police department. We got rid of that ugly porch out in front. It's my favorite accomplishment of the year. Department of Emergency Communications, you heard last week that we're one of only 252 accredited service dispatching agencies in the world. Of course, we have launched this text to 911 in the last year. We all know about the prescription drug monitoring program that's been, I guess we'll be celebrating like a one-year anniversary here in a couple months. The sort of thing that we dealt with a year ago, I think, the rest of the country's just now starting to realize, including Congress, I think is just now realizing they've got to, we've got to do some things. 64,000 people died of an overdose last year. We all know that we have a healthy county. You can see that our public health contributes to that, and you can see the numbers there. Of course, our people do a very good job of taking care of themselves and making some intelligent lifestyle decisions and avoiding the sorts of behaviors that can negatively impact their health. Parks, another great year, 1.5 million visits, 12 different parks. The Total Eclipse was great. Daniel Boone Home has been even more popular than it was before we took it over. Here's a picture of our Veterans Tribute Park between Pittman Hill and Kisker Road, and I think we've got another, can you put in the, this is a picture that we just took today. This is the narrow picture of the park.
Wow.
The good thing about all the rain we had this weekend is it filled up the lakes. They'll look even nicer when all the sediment has a chance to settle to the bottom. But that gives you some idea of at least how the lakes are going to look. That mounted area in the top, kind of in the middle there, that's where we anticipate we'll put the additional monuments where we have inscribed all the names of St. Charles County men and women who were killed in action. We're going to wait until the weather gets a little better and go out there, but we have, we've actually talked to people about ordering the monuments, and we're going to move full speed ahead of that, on that, as soon as we can actually get in the park and start doing some things. New Melly Lakes Golf Course and the home out there, we hope to have a soft opening on that this spring since it already has the trails and it already has some facilities. We think we can at least open it on a limited sort of basis, at least for hiking and biking and some things like that. And then we'll continue to plan on, you know, exactly how we're going to use the house. We now have access to it, and I think just this week, we signed a contract, an architect to tell us what we should keep and what we should tear down out there. So, and of course, restoration began on the Daniel Boone Hayes home at Mattson Hill Park near Defiance. Jury Job Center, first American Job Center to be certified as an official sponsor of registered apprentice programs. Scott's been doing a super job out there. Always great to look at unemployment rates, and we continue to have the lowest in the region. Manufacturing sector had the highest total annual wage topping $1 billion. There's a story in the Post Dispatch this morning about manufacturing in the entire region, how it's doing very well. Total assessed value, 8.3 billion. But more importantly, if you remember a couple years ago, we looked at the median home in the various cities and the various parts of the county. We looked at that again this year. Things haven't changed. We still can look at every one of our cities, and they're all doing well. They're all doing between, I would say, between 9 and 11 percent growth, which is good. There's nobody really falling behind, and the average is 10.3. That's over a two-year period, but that's the additional value of the median home in the county. Now, here's kind of stuff I think is kind of interesting, some comparisons. Obviously, the population we're familiar with, the increase in population, 8.4. 8.4 percent. They'll look even nicer when all the sediment has a chance to settle to the bottom. But that gives you some idea of at least how the lakes are going to look. That mounted area in the top, kind of in the middle there, that's where we anticipate we'll put the additional monuments, where we have inscribed all the names of St. Charles County men and women who were killed in action. We're going to wait until the weather gets a little better and go out there, but we have, we've actually talked to people about ordering the monuments, and we're going to move full speed ahead of that, on that, as soon as we can actually get in the park and start doing some things. Numelly Lakes Golf Course and the home out there, we hope to have a soft opening on that this spring, since it already has the trails and it already has some facilities. We think we can at least open it on a limited sort of basis, at least for hiking and biking and some things like that. And then we'll continue to plan on, you know, exactly how we're going to use the house. The, we now have access to it, and I think just this week, we signed a contract, an architect to tell us what we should keep and what we should tear down out there. So. And of course, restoration began on the Daniel Boone Hayes home at Mattson Hill Park near Jury Jobs Center, first American Jobs Center to be certified as an official sponsor of registered apprentice programs. Scott's been doing a super job out there. Always great to look at unemployment rates, and we continue to have the lowest in the region. Manufacturing sector had the highest total annual wage, topping $1 billion. There's a story in the Post Dispatch this morning about manufacturing in the entire region, how it's doing very well. Total assessed value, 8.3 billion. But more importantly, remember a couple years ago, we looked at the median home in the various cities and the various parts of the county? We looked at that again this year. Things haven't changed. We still can look at every one of our cities, and they're all doing well. They're all doing between, I would say, between 9 and 11 percent growth, which is good. There's nobody really falling behind, and the average is 10.3. That's over a two-year period, but that's the additional value of the median home in the county. Now, here's kind of stuff I think is kind of interesting, some comparisons. Obviously, the population we're familiar with, the increase in population, 8.4. 8.4 percent. Let's see, is that, is that in one year? Is that one year, in the last year?
Yes.
Okay. So, 8.4 percent while everybody, while St. Louis is zero and St. Louis City is losing, you can see that we have half of the new housing starts in the three different, three main jurisdictions here. Increase in total jobs, we're up 6.29 compared to the other two. Makes you kind of wonder why, when the Amazon thing came up, why they didn't call us and ask us, hey, what are you doing out there to create these jobs, and how can you help us get Amazon? But that's not the way it worked out. Average household income, again, you can see we're a little bit ahead of St. Louis County. But here's what I think is an important distinction between us and St. Louis County. You can see there, the top, it's the percentage of people living in poverty. Well, we're at 5.2 percent. St. Louis County, 9.2, and St. Louis City, quite a bit higher. But if you look at the other extreme, people over 200,000, 5.9 compared to 7.9 compared to 2.8. So what we have in St. Charles County, we have the same average income as St. Louis County, but we have fewer poor people, but we also have fewer rich people. We are very much a middle-class county, and especially compared to St. Louis County. Percent of federal dollars for transportation, you know, I think we're getting our fair share. You might argue that the city deserves a little bit less since it has 100,000 people more than we do, but you could argue St. Louis County with 900,000-plus probably deserves a little bit more. But that's the way it's worked out. Violent crimes, obviously something we're very, very proud of. And the one thing, of course, we have to continue if we want to continue to grow. Good schools and safe neighborhoods, that's been, that's been our key to our success. Property crimes, similar, similar situation. Percentage of police officers with associate degree are higher. As you remember, about 10 years ago, we started giving incentives for people to get an associate's degree or bachelor's degree, and as you can see, they've responded. And especially compared to the city of St. Louis, I think that 77 is a great number. The better trained these people are, the less of a liability they are to us, and you all know that public safety is where we have the greatest liability problem. So, I'm very proud of that. The average pay, St. Louis County, of course, went way ahead of us. They passed that special tax, a special sales tax just for police officers, something we'll need to consider as we go forward. We want to continue to be competitive. Obviously, you can see we're very competitive compared to the city of St. Louis. Acres of parkland, still got a little bit ways to go before we catch up with St. Louis County, this is acres per person. But on miles of trails, you can see we're way ahead. We've got, if you like trails, this is a place to live. This is something we've already talked about, and just the average cost of government services. As you know, we basically, we've increased, they've increased 5.7 while they lost population, and we increased in the county 3.8 while we grew by 1,600 people. That's something we're very proud of, but it's also going to be harder and harder to keep up that, to keep that up if our, if our income from sales tax continues to, the rate of increase continues to decline. And again, this is, here, we can see our sales tax is up only 1.66 percent. Those of you who've been on the council for a while, remember the good old days when it was, it would raise 10, 12, 14 percent. Now, it's only going up 1.66. That doesn't even allow us to keep up with inflation. We're contributing to 911, 1.3 million a year. Little growth in the state sales tax. Our general fund remains at zero. And of course, road and bridge, we can't raise without this, without the, going to the people. Average county employees went up 3 percent. Looking ahead, some of the roads, I mentioned Guttermuth Road, 364 interchange. Public safety, we got emergency operations opening, open house to display the various renovations and improvements at the police department, including that shooting facility. Parks, again, Veterans Tribute will be opening. The soft opening I mentioned with Numelly Lakes won't have everything that we eventually want to have at that park, but at least be a place people can go. I drove out there yesterday afternoon, and there was all kinds of people walking around out there on the old golf course. Information technology, we're going to redesign the county website, launch electronic medical records platforms. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. If you want to talk about it later on, that would be great, too. And if any of you want to use this presentation to speak to people in your district, it's certainly available. And if you don't have any questions, I'll sit down.
Thank you, Executive Drelman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Proves once again, St. Charles County is a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Moving on to the consent agenda. Any items to be removed? Motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Moving on to miscellaneous, is there anything...
Your bills for final passage.
Oh, vote for final passage. Very good.
Bill number 4571, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Missouri Secretary of State for a grant awarded to the election authority and amending the 2018 budget adopted as ordinance 17-113 by making supplemental appropriations to the election authority fund in the amount of $54,629 for an election efficiency grant to assist with election activities, systems, and equipment maintenance, voting equipment purchases, maintaining voter lists, and polling place accessibility.
Any questions or comments on bill number 4571? Seeing none?
An ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Missouri Secretary of State for a grant awarded to the election authority and amending the 2018 budget adopted as ordinance 17-113 by making supplemental appropriations to the election authority fund in the amount of $54,629 for an election efficiency grant to assist with election activities, systems, and equipment maintenance, voting equipment purchases, maintaining voter lists, and polling place accessibility. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Bill 4571 has passed, and that's the only bill we had to pass tonight. Moving on to table bills, 4534, is that to be removed from the table? Seeing not, then that concludes bills. Announcements and miscellaneous, does anybody have anything? Chief?
I have not one spell the secrets, but tomorrow is Mr. Hazel's birthday.
Oh. Happy birthday.
Thank you very much, everybody.
He's the only one who said it.
The police officer that was shot today, but not severely injured, we're all happy that he survived the impact of that bullet. And Chief, could you give us a report on his status?
He was released, and he went home. I can't discuss the case, obviously, but we want to thank everyone for the outstanding equipment that you make available so we can provide the protection for the citizens. They have to hold our families, too, so we appreciate your support, and the county executives makes our job a little safer. We keep going out every day and every night, you know what you expect us to do.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Yes?
Say a prayer tonight for the boys in blue, that they stay protected and out of harm's way.
Very good. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, everybody.
(inaudible).